I hereby call this special meeting of the Richmond Public Schools School Board to order. Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, before I call the roll, I'd just like to read the statement again, that this meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance, number 2020-093. The notice of the meeting stated the following, that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and will be live streamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there, and the link was provided. The board would not receive public comment, however, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rba schools.net, and the comments would be shared with the board and posted to RPS's board doc site. The agenda for the meeting was posted to the RPS board doc site, and a link was provided. The link was also provided to the Facebook page. So for roll call, Ms. Door.
Yes, here.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Dr. Sapini. Ms. Owen.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Page.
Here.
Seven of the nine members of the public body are participating in this meeting.
I'm here as well.
And that was Attorney Thompson?
No, that was Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Gibson, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your voice. So we have eight members of your public body participating.
Okay. So, we move to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Is that Ms. Page making the motion and Mr. Barlow?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion on that, Madam Chair?
Is there any discussion? All right.
Ms. Page.
We're voting on the agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
And the agenda is adopted as presented.
All right, then we move to public information. Would you share that with everyone, please? Ms. Wilson?
We do have several public comments this evening. Let me pull those up. And they have been posted to board docs. The first comment is from Margaret Henderson. She asked, when will the seniors at Huguenot High receive their diplomas, official transcript, and final report cards? She also asked, when will parents and students receive information concerning diplomas, official transcript, and report cards, and cap and gown orders? Thomas Hartman, as they say, no crisis should be wasted as an opportunity for deepened reflection and course alteration. I ask that you reflect upon and modify strategic plan area number four, deep partnership with families and communities. First, add something bold and innovative about volunteers. Retired professionals in particular can be such an excellent source of tutoring in areas related to their expertise. The traditional somewhat snooty attitude of school systems toward volunteers should be consciously transformed, and use the ask. It is the ask that gets results. Waiting for people to come to you and repeatedly ring the doorbell does not work. And then don't just use volunteers in subservient roles for which they are way overqualified. Please add an aggressive, innovative action item specific to volunteers. Second, please modify Action 4.4. By singling out young men of color for mentoring, this item is unintentionally racist and sexist. Enough said. Any young person in RPS may well need mentoring. Catherine Marquetti, as you consider the FY21 budget, I urge you to include the originally proposed 4% teacher raise. While $9.4 million is a hefty price tag, it is still less than half of the $19 million in new funding you get to allocate. Investing in the 4% teacher raises would truly prove that you are putting students and teachers first. New curricula, new programs, and additional central office staff are great, but retaining the incredible teachers that are already in RPS should be priority number one. This pandemic has shown us that teachers are truly invaluable to our community, and it is time that their paycheck starts to reflect that. Teachers have proven that we don't need a fancy program or new scripted curriculum. In a matter of weeks, we were able to deliver amazing online lessons to reach our students where they are. We just need the autonomy to do what we are trained to do and a paycheck to reflect the monumental task we have in educating the next generation. I understand this will not be an easy decision, but I urge you to put the 4% teacher raise at the top of your priority list. Thank you. Emily Spencer, good evening, school board members and superintendent Camaras. As a teacher who began her career in the public school system during the last recession, I am urging you to prioritize raises for teachers and staff. We have chosen to stay in public education despite the pay, despite the low regard the public has for teachers and educators, and despite the numerous standardized testing that are piled upon our plate year after year. We stay because we love our students and we fundamentally believe that public education should be a fundamental right for all students. But if we're being honest, we still struggle to pay our bills every month. Our paychecks have still not recovered from the last recession, and we're about to go into another recession. I don't know how much longer we can afford to stay in the profession that we love. Please prioritize raises for teachers and staff, even if you can't give us the full amount. Kaitlyn Waldron. I am asking about the sanitation budget. When will the carpet be ripped out of Henderson Middle School? I returned to my classroom and immediately left with a sinus infection as my doctor determined. This is my seventh sinus infection in two years. I was tested for COVID because they were unsure. That carpet is unsanitary and has stains all over it from years of neglect. This is an unsafe working condition, and it needs to be handled. Thank you for understanding this health issue. She also said, I have asked my principal multiple times about the transfer fair, and he has ignored the questions over and over again. My principal has not communicated except for every eight to 10 days. This is inadequate. When is the transfer fair? Will transfer requests be honored? Has the transfer fair already passed? Debbie Miller, as you consider the FY21 budget, I urge you to include the originally proposed 4% teacher raise. While $9.4 million is a hefty price tag, it is still less than half the $19 million in new funding you allocate. This looks like a repeat. So I will look to make sure this is the same one and come back if you don't mind. Crystal Corey, as you consider the FY21 budget, I urge you to include the originally proposed. Okay.
Just tell us who said it, and it is the same.
That was Crystal Corey, and it looks the same. The next one is just initials. Our teachers work hard, and now everybody knows firsthand what their jobs are like. Parents are having difficulties dealing with their own one to three kids multiple times, 25 for teachers. We need to stop making teacher raises the first time to delete when trimming RPS budget. They've done too much protesting and lobbying this year to receive nothing. Give them their cost of living adjustments, which is not even an authentic raise. You will break your teacher's spirits and fight if you don't. Corey Atkins, considering the possibility of COVID resurgence in September, is there a plan in place or development stage? And that was the last one. So I will check to see if those others are duplicates, Madam Chair. If they're not, I will let you all know, if that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
All right, we're moving on now to number three, 3.01. Receive and discuss budget updates and FY21 budget. And we will start with Mr. Camaras.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. It's good to see everybody again this evening. I hope you've had a good week thus far. I'm going to share my screen, so give me one second. All right. I know that might be a little bit hard to read, but I can zoom in, so I'll do that as we get into discussion. Before we do dive in, I did want to just say, again, how grateful, frankly, I am that we do have more revenue next year, while it is certainly nowhere near what we were hoping for. The fact that we are still up, I think, is a real blessing and enables us to do some of what we were hoping to do. At the same time, I want to acknowledge, we have some tough choices and really difficult decisions to make about what some of those new things are that we might need to press pause on or pull back on. And so towards that end, I've tried to give an initial take on how we might approach that. I know we had originally talked about maybe getting to the line by line a little bit later, but I did want you to have at least a starting point, and so we produced that. Again, it's just a draft, it's just a starting point. But I did want you to have something to react to. If, Ms. Owen, if you agree, I still think it probably makes sense to start with the larger ticket items, which I have highlighted in yellow. Those are any of the items that we had originally planned to increase by more than half a million dollars. So that's why they're highlighted in yellow. It's the same group of items that were in the presentation from Monday evening. But before we do dive into the spreadsheet, I did want to also just explain everything so that it is clear. Let me just, I'm going to use the example of the art and music and language teachers. Whoops, sorry about that. I'm going to try to use, whoops, my iPad to help annotate this to make it a little bit clearer for folks. So, okay. The, so I'm right here. Excuse me, all right, right here. Action 1.1, maintain 10 FY20 and add 10 FY21 art, music, language PE teachers for equity of offerings at high priority schools. So what you see here is a couple of columns, and let me explain what they are. So this column right here, that's the amount that we had budgeted in FY20. So that's the amount we have now. So we used that 800K to hire 10 additional teachers that were working this year until the closure. The next column, this is the approved increase or decrease for FY21. So this is what the board approved before the virus hit. As you can see, the board approved a $815,000 increase. So we were at 800, the board approved the $815,000 increase. This column is the proposed revised increase. So instead of going up 815, what I'm proposing here is that we only go up 244,500. And so then the last column, this shows the revised total, which is the current budgeted amount, because that carries over into next year, plus the revised addition, or in some cases, decrease. And so that gives the total amount proposed for next year. The impact of this one, for example, is that instead of adding 10 more, we would only be adding three more. So that's how the spreadsheet works. With that, let me pause and just see, Ms. Owen, do you want to start with just the yellow ones? Would that be a good place to start?
I'm looking to see if I have any chat about it. And I don't, so go ahead. But I, when you have it looking like this, we can't see anything. So it's good when you move around and make it bigger, so that we can see what it is you're talking about.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first item is the 4% raise. And as we discussed previously, that's about $9.4 million. So that's what we had approved for next year. Obviously, this is something that we certainly would love to be able to do when balanced against all of the other needs for next year. We worked really hard to try to preserve at least a portion of that. And so the proposal here is to retain a 1% increase, which costs about $2.35 million. I do want to note that the step increase at 1.9 million is still in there. So that is still in there. And the increase in any healthcare costs for our employees, we are still covering that. That is still in there as well. So the step increase is in there, the 1% increase is in there, as well as the covering of any increase in healthcare costs. Again, I know this is obviously a very difficult one to manage, and I'm open to any pushes and certainly want to hear if there's a consensus of the board to restore it even higher. I just want everyone to keep in mind that so every percent is about $2.35 million. And that equates to about 30 teaching positions. So for every percent we go up or down, that's about 30 teaching positions, just as a benchmark to keep in mind. So let me just pause there. I know that was a lot, so I'll throw it back to the chair.
We do have some people who want to speak now. So Jonathan Young, then Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow, and then Jonathan again. So Jonathan?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, want to acknowledge the difficult position that we're in, but grateful for everybody's interest in making the most of the terrible situation. With that said, I would propose, for what it's worth, and would be very interested in hearing my colleagues' weigh-in on this, but I propose that that we actually do this in reverse, and specifically that the pay increase for teachers would be the very, the very last, the very last expenditure that we would, we would address or revisit. Instead, that we would, my intent is to, is to reduce expenditures in other parts of the budget, and perhaps we can reduce expenditures in other parts of the budget beyond what's already been proposed here to retain, retain more, more money in the pay increase for the teachers. So just from a process perspective, I guess my question for my colleagues and for the superintendent is if maybe it makes sense for us to start with the rest of the budget and then, and then revisit this towards the latter part of the conversation. Just food for thought. And for me, it's more than that, because it's, it's a top priority to retain those dollars for the pay increase. So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Barlow, now Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Burke and Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry if you hear something in the background, but you know, family. So I support Mr. Young's recommendation in terms of how we approach this. I would also like the board to consider including a representative teacher in our next budget discussion. I think, given the, the impact that the budget is going to have in how we proceed next year, and given the unique scenario that we find ourselves in, I think perhaps inviting the president of the Richmond Education Association or another teacher to, to join, much like we have a student representative at our next meeting, I think would be insightful to do as we move forward. And, and, and I think, like Mr. Young said, we should do everything that we can in order to preserve as much of the raise as we can. I also ask for clarification in terms of the state budget, what the financial implication is in terms of the shared raise. I, you know, if there is any revenue coming from the state, just, just to get clarity on that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Barlow? Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I largely agree with, with Ms. Gibson's points. I was going to definitely recommend that we take a closer look to see what we can do, and with Mr. Young's points, to see what we can do to preserve as much of that 4% raise for teachers as possible. I'm certainly interested in in going through these in a little bit more detail to help iron that out. And would definitely like your feedback from the administration as well about the state impacts here. So, thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me?
I said, and then Ms. Page.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Be mindful that each cut has consequences, whether we start at the top or the bottom. I don't have a problem or concern regards to, because tonight we are revisiting. We're not making any hard decisions. This is one of more meetings to come. So I don't have a problem with starting with the teachers first. It may end up being this, it may be end up being more, it may end up being less. But I'm, however it unfolds, there will be consequences. But my main concern also is, as a teacher, it's okay sometimes to be addressed first, because this is not the final decision tonight. So however it unfolds, I do expect to hear more details, but there will be consequences in every line item that's highlighted and maybe beyond. I hope that we can find all that we can and then some. When you think in terms of our neighboring areas that have, have put in place no raises at all, including the city, at this point, I'm, I'm appreciative that there is still a conversation in regards to keeping the step and having a raise as well. Right now, the suggestion is 1%, by the end of the night, or when we meet on May 4th, it may be something totally different. I am in agreement with the representative being a part of the discussion. That's fine. But teachers have also made it clear, we appreciate them. They have truly, truly, as always, from the heart, done what's expected for every child, and I'm so thankful for that. But so far as when we address it, let's get the hard part done in the beginning, move forward, and as I stated, when we come back on May 4th, we may change it completely. This is not etched in stone. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Page? Mrs. Page?
Apologize, Madam Chair. I forgot to unmute. But I was just saying that this is a daunting task. The decisions that we, that we have before us, everything is on the table. We appreciate all and then some that our teachers are doing, doing this crisis, and, and, and will continue to do. But I also want to keep in the forefront, making sure the decisions that we make will be most impactful, meaningful for our students, the resources for our students, the support that they are going to need. Because we recognize that we'll be facing a summer slide, and I have called it the Corona Slide. We're just going to have so many needs. So is on the table, the 1%, and yes, we need more information. But again, we need to keep our children in the forefront and making sure that our teachers have the support and the resources that they need for our students. That's first and foremost. And I just, I can't waver regarding the needs of our students and being supportive of our teachers.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we were, Mr. Camaras?
Yes.
So we will move on in your presentation.
Okay. And let me share the screen again. Okay, whoops. The next item is the additional art, music, language, and PE teachers that we were going to propose. The initial proposal here is that we go from adding 815,000, which would get us 10 more, to 244,500 additional, which would mean that we would have three new FTEs for these subjects next year. Ms. Owen, should I continue, or do you want me to pause for questions and comments for each of these?
I think, continue. Keep going.
Okay, the next item is the STEM academies at MLK and Henderson. Originally, the budget had called for an additional 2 million for these. We have reduced that a little bit to reflect a more detailed budget estimate. So having it come down to 1,875,000. Moving on, the next item is the reading specialists. And again, we wanted to maximize the state match, and we think this is especially important, given that there are likely going to be significant deficits going into next year. We let's see, we had it at 15, and, oh, I'm sorry, this one is, it's in yellow, but there's no change. We had an additional 830,000 originally, and we're proposing to keep it at 830,000 to maximize our match from the state.
Mr. Camaras, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but now we have three people who would like to comment or have questions, I think, and this has to do with the STEM Academy.
Okay.
Okay, so first, Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Cosby, and then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camaras, can you provide a little bit more detail about where the 125,000 in cuts came from? And do you have any more detail, any more specific details about what these budgets are made up of? Since it's such a large line item, I'm curious to, to see what the impacts of these changes may have.
So I'm going to ask Dr. App, who I believe is on the call to talk through the budget a little bit more. If she is.
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Good evening. To answer your question in terms of what's in the budget, there, the bulk of the budget is personnel. That includes a dedicated AP/Coordinator for the STEM Academy for each, each of the two campuses. It includes compensation for teachers for extended time, as we do plan on having a longer school day for students in sixth grade in the STEM Academy. It includes planning stipends for the sixth grade teams in the STEM Academy. It includes planning stipends for the 6th grade teams in the STEM Academy, with the hopes that at some point this summer, we'll be able to resume that work. If not, we'll do it virtually. But we still want to compensate teachers who are doing summer planning. It also includes between, depending on the number, basically, some of this depends on where we land with personnel, teacher salary information. But between five and six additional teacher FTEs, three of those would be a dedicated STEM teacher. And then an additional, one to two additional FTEs, given that these academies may not operate on the same exact schedule as the 7th and 8th graders. It also includes Chromebooks and hotspots for all of the students here, as well as about 45,000 in science lab equipment, 36,000 in classroom technology, smart screens, updated projectors, dot cams. The largest single expense is what we call the Smart Lab, which is a pretty awesome creative space that's outfitted for learning the STEM processes, which is what the STEM teacher will run. And that is about 220,000 per campus. And that includes all of the technology, the coding information, the coding software installation support. Just a whole, that alone, I could provide a lot more details. We certainly would be bringing that to the board for any contract approval before we move there, move forward there. About 24,000. And actually, if I add up all of these, between transportation and field lessons, that's about 70,000. And then about 80,000 in furniture upgrades, just given particularly Henderson needing many upgrades, but wanting the classroom space to really facilitate the type of project-based learning the STEM academies will be known for. And then we've allocated about 20,000 for any minor physical space modifications to ensure that the look and feel is conducive to the type of learning environment we're trying to create.
So that does make me even more excited about these STEM academies, to hear some more of those details, which is great. But I am, it would be, it would be.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair.
There were two other people. Can we come back to you again?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Cosby, and then Ms. Page, and then we'll come back to Mr. Barlow. And then Ms. Gibson.
Yes, thank you. Actually, Dr. Epp covered my question, but I did want to know in terms of the reduction, what does that, what's being reduced?
Well, we had, as you remember, we originally had projected about 2 million. The cost of the Smart Labs came in about 75,000 under. And then, so that was the main reduction. And then we don't, thinking about physical space and where we want to invest our dollars, we thought that we could save some dollars from physical space modifications, especially since we have three other very big construction projects going on, wanting to be careful about overdoing it in that area.
Okay. And what you have, and I don't know if this probably is getting to what Scott may have been, probably one of his follow-up questions, I know for me, to get that detail planned would be great for the STEM academies.
Happy to share that, however the board would like to receive.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow, and then Ms. Gibson.
Yes, so I think Dr. Epp pretty much answered my question, because my question was regarding the reduction. And the reduction does not impact the intentionality of the program, the purpose of the program for our students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and thanks to Ms. Cosby for following up on the budget breakdown. That was one part of the question. The other is whether we can use any of the one-time federal stimulus funds for things like the furniture, lab equipment, things of that nature.
I will defer to Mr. Camaras to answer that. I will say, I know that we are counting on the federal stimulus dollars for, you know, for all of the students in the division, particularly to ramp up on remediation service, intervention services, and additional student supports. So I'm not, there's flexibility in how those dollars are allowed. But I do, in terms of, this is for two grade levels and two campuses, so about 300 students total. So I would just want the board to consider that expenditure against other division priorities.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate the request to have the plan documented. I think it's important to have that detail outlined clearly for the public. And as we are considering the details as we move forward, I'd also request, given the unique circumstances that we find ourselves in, that the plan include timing for, you know, how these things will roll out over the next months, so that they are able to be executed, specifically the timing for the Smart Lab creation and other space enhancements. You know, given the possibility of where we may be through the fall. And I seem to recall that there was some professional development that was also outlined as a, as something that we had budgeted for. So I'd be interested in getting more detail on that. And then also, I also recall some discussion about grant funding. And so I'd also request that in the plan for the STEM academies, that the administration also provide line items for those items that are going to be funded through grants and other measures from the state or private philanthropy, so that when we are looking at the plan, we're getting the total picture.
Thank you all. So seeing no others, Mr. Camaras?
Okay.
You can continue.
All right, very good. Let me bring this back up. Okay. I'm going to move down to our next one. This was our 12 additional AP and other advanced course teachers. As a reminder, we were going to add 978,000. We are now proposing to just add 244,500. That means that instead of adding 12, we would be adding three new FTEs. Obviously, this hampers our ability to continue to grow our AP programming and get more students into those classes. But again, we're just trying to balance all of the competing interests. Moving on. Whoops, excuse me. The next one is the 10 additional special education positions. These were ICCs and teachers, maybe RSPs. Again, as a reminder, we were going to add $815,000 for this, which would get us 10 positions. We're now, as a draft, offering 244,500, which again, would bring us down to three new positions on that front. Moving on to the elementary behavior pilot. Again, very difficult decision here, but again, trying to find the necessary funds. The recommendation is to, initially, it was 740,000. The recommendation is, there was a little bit of money to start with. And so that's being zeroed out. And so really, we would be pressing pause on this work for next year. I know that is an incredibly unpopular draft recommendation. It pains me as well. Again, just trying to find the dollars to make up for the lost revenue. So I see people writing in, so I'll pause there.
Okay. So I believe it's Ms. Burke. Ms. Burke?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much. I was just smiling moving through this presentation, because I was so happy to see that we weren't cutting anything fully out, which means there's always an opportunity to build up, hopefully better for the school year after that. But I need you, please, sir, to go back. I can't see on the screen. Can you, this is what specialist, which program was this in regards to? Elementary school behavior specialist? Is that what the title was? What's this line item?
It was going to be a pilot program for elementary students who exhibited severe behavior challenges in school and in either an alternative setting or more intensive supports. It's a very significant need. We were trying to balance both the financial piece, but also our bandwidth to start new things next year. And so trust me, it gives me great pain to even put this on as a possibility. And certainly, we'll follow the will of the board here if there's a strong feeling otherwise.
Madam Chair, may I continue?
Yes, and then Ms. Page.
All right. Thank you for explaining it, Mr. Camaras. I appreciate that. And I'm very, very familiar, you're reiterating just what that was about. I ask that we, as a board, don't completely delete that at this point, that just put, as you have here, press pause. As we go through the budget, there may be other opportunities. But I'm thinking in terms of, number one, as we talk often, one of the purposes of this program would be to have fewer out-of-school suspensions for behaviors. And students will still be in a school setting to learn, but maybe an alternative setting. As Ms. Cosby, we've talked about this before, Baby Rap, I can't remember the real name of it. But I ask that we, it causes you great pain, it causes me pain as well. Please put a question mark there, and I hope we can come back and visit that. Be it, as someone stated earlier, well, you put the question mark there, that's all I ask. Thank you. Because I believe it's needed in thinking about our children, bless their hearts, coming back to school. Whenever we do get back in school, it's going to be a lot of adjustments. And as Ms. Page said earlier, we need to give them as much support to our teachers, our students, our families. And this is something that is not putting a Band-Aid on the situation, is giving children and families support. Because there will be behaviors or whatever else that we may have to address. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Page, and then Ms. Cosby. Ms. Page, you need to unmute.
Okay, I keep forgetting. I just said, I shared the sentiment of my colleague regarding this line item. And yes, I support putting a pause on this, because again, we're going to need a lot of support. Because this is something we have never experienced. I know I've never experienced it in my lifetime. And, you know, that social, emotional support, we need that support for our students. And I'm sure it's confusing to, very confusing to them, very confusing to their adults. So I would say, put a placeholder with that. And as we continue to go through the budget, there may be some other items, some other areas that we can make adjustments. But I do not support eliminating this altogether.
Okay, Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues. I did have a question for this particular line item. One, if we can look at partnerships with organizations that do similar work. And also, if we can look at the federal stimulus funds to see what portions of it maybe we can use. Even if it's one-time funding, for right now, we know we have to look at continuing it next year. But at least it's something that would get us started, especially as we talk about behavioral issues. And this, we've talked about for a very, very long time. We, you know, we see it in our disciplinary committee meetings all the time. We see our young people, they're getting younger and younger, with significant behavioral issues and discipline issues. And we do not have an alternative way of addressing it. And we definitely have to stem our dropout rate. So if we can look at, one, partnerships, and second, the stimulus package.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Ms. Dorr?
Thank you. I agree largely with some of the, with what my colleagues have said before me. Two thoughts about how to advance the discussion. One, there are a couple of different sort of pilots or really important things that we have been talking about as a board, wanting to move forward on. And to Ms. Burke's point, it would be a shame to lose momentum on that. So I would love to see, for anything that is sort of on the strategic front, i.e., we haven't done it yet, but we're, we want to do it next year, what is the minimum amount of money that we could invest to at least keep the momentum going or keep the project moving forward? So I'd love to see kind of a version of that, so that we could weigh the trade-offs of fully moving forward with the project, or at least not, at least not going backward. And then second request would be, and I think this is probably, we're going to have a lot of questions about how the stimulus funds can be used. It's come up a couple of times already. So back to some of the comments that we all made last meeting, I know that was three days ago. But a view on what, is there, it seemed like, from the administration's perspective on Monday, that the stimulus funds, you know, we really wanted to be careful about earmarking those for non-COVID-related expenditures, just because there are so many potential impacts of the school being out, needing to clean schools, potentially needing to support kids with additional supports, that it might be risky to allocate those funds to something else. But I would just like to understand that a little bit better. And then related to that, you know, what is the fund balance situation? And is there, are there funds within the fund balance that could be allocated to one-time items? So just want to reiterate that request.
Thank you. And Ms. Page has another comment? Unmute, unmute.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, something my colleague, Ms. Cosby, said about our young children. You know, that we are seeing our children younger and younger in our disciplinary meetings. And it's very troublesome. So, you know, this is something, we need to be creative. And I don't think the focus needs to be one-time funding. We need to be able to sustain this initiative to give support to our students on an elementary level. And so I would caution us in looking at funding for one time, because this is something that we need to be able to sustain. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Camaras?
Okay, moving on. Oh, one thing, the United States Department of Education today released more guidance around the stimulus. I have not yet had a chance to fully review it, but I will do that tomorrow. And then follow up with the board about any other parameters that they have given. So we do have more information, it was just released this afternoon, so I will take a look at that. Okay, moving on. The next two items are about VPI. So additional teachers to reach an expanded allotment to 1143. That's, we had 1,200 before, but 1143 now we know is the allotment that we'll get from the state next year. We were at about 900 or so this year. And then the related transportation to assist with that. So dealing with each of those. Originally, we were gonna add 1.5 million or thereabouts for the additional staff. We have done some more calculations and realized that we're actually already matching more to the state than was originally anticipated. And so we do think that we can bring that down to an increase of 815,000. On a similar vein, we were talking about a really hefty increase to our transportation budget, about 2 million more for next year. But the transportation team has done some really good thinking. If we change the time when pre-K kids are going to school, and I don't have all the details tonight, but I will try to get those for you as soon as I can. We could reduce the number of routes, potentially have pre-K kids ride with elementary kids. There's some trade-offs to that, obviously. But there is a sense that we potentially only need 500,000 more. So that would save us a big chunk of change. So we've put that in as the placeholder for now, given that we think we can realize some savings there. Moving on. The next three items. The custodian salary increase, the bus operator and monitor salary increase, and then the decompression of the AP salary schedule. So let me deal with each of those. Starting with the custodian. We had originally budgeted an additional 1.5 million. The town office has done all the calculations, and it looks like it's going to be about 1.3 million more. So a little bit of savings there. Moving on to the monitors. Again, we had budgeted about 500,000 more, but it looks like it's going to be actually about 320,000 more. So that is also good news. Unfortunately, given the situation that we're in, the 1.1 million for the AP decompression just does not seem feasible at this time. So we've brought that down to zero. Of course, that could be something that we would prioritize for next year. All right, I'm gonna move on into priority three. We had the maintenance of two nurses that we added this year, and we were gonna add five more. As you can see, we preserved that in its entirety. We were going to add 537,000, we are still going to add 537,000. The next item there was to maintain the six behavior specialists. As you may recall, a grant is expiring, and we wanted to make sure that we're able to hold on to those folks. And again, similarly, we were going to add 528, and we are still going to add 528 on that one. Moving on, let's do the next item in yellow. The equity fund, which we started last year, where we gave funds to Woodville, Fairfield Court, Carver, et cetera. This is another one of those painful changes. As you may recall, we had $450,000 in that fund in FY '20, our current year. We were going to add 550,000 to take us to an even million. So what we are now proposing is actually, not only are we not going to be able to add more money, but that we would have to eliminate the fund that we had from last year. Doesn't mean the things that were purchased last year go away, it just means that 450,000 line item won't carry over into next year. And so in essence, we would be pressing pause on the equity fund. Again, those monies were only allowed to be used on one-time expenditure. So there's no staff against them or anything of that nature. It was computers and other supplies. So cutting it doesn't take that away, it just means that the fund would be at zero for next year. Again, deeply painful, trying to make the numbers add up. The next is 10 additional custodians. And for that one, we had originally allocated 500,000. We are now allocating in this proposal 250,000, which means we would be adding five new custodians, not 10. All right, this takes us to our additional basic needs and adjustments. So you'll remember that we wanted to maximize the class size reduction funds. And to do that, we have to hire more K through three teachers and instructional assistants. Given how important it is that we provide really excellent instruction in the best possible way, particularly after this crisis. We have maintained that. We were gonna add in about 2 million to maximize those funds from the state. And we are recommending that we continue to do that so that we can maximize that. And then we had eight additional positions for equity of middle school offerings. Based on our middle school enrollments for next year. It's looking like that is going to be very important. The projections are a little bit higher in middle and, and high school. And so we were recommending an addition of 652,000 for those positions. We are still recommending an addition of 652,000 for those positions.
Mr. Camaras, I hate to interrupt you.
Yes.
But Ms. Page, and then Ms. Burke.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanna go back to the line item with the equity funding. I can't see it on my screen, action item.
It's one, it's 5.4.
Okay, so the reduction that you're speaking of in that area, is it, is there a reduction in academic enrichment? Oh, you know, what would be impacted by that reduction?
Well, these are I apologize.
No, I was, I was gonna say, and then you can answer. Again, as we continue to go through this budget, finding other areas, other areas that may can make up that, that amount. Because again, if we're, if we're reducing things that would impact our students, academic enrichment, remediation, you know, regarding the equity funding, I would really like to look at other alternatives.
Well, thank you for raising that, Ms. Page. Each school used the funds a little bit differently. Some purchased technology, some purchased books, some purchased basically professional development services. Some did more trainings around restorative justice or trauma-informed practices. Some bought books to do a book study. So we really left it up to the schools to determine what would be most useful for them. Look, obviously, any of those funds would be helpful to kids. The one thing I do wanna note here is the schools that received those funds, they spent them this year, and so they got the benefit from them. We have not yet articulated that anybody else would be getting these funds. And so there's no school that was sort of expecting, I'm getting 100,000 and I'm gonna use it for A, B, and C, and now we're taking that away. We were just at this point in the budget process, trying to put the money into the pot. And so that is perhaps a silver lining here, that it's not as if there's a set of supplies that we're now taking away because we hadn't allocated those money. And we hadn't even articulated which schools we're going to get it next year anyway.
So do we have any, excuse me, Madam Chair, just have a follow-up question. But do we have any data that supports, you know, the things that were implemented from that, that funding they received last year? To show the value of those dollars of their support?
I don't have any in front of me. And my assumption is it would be hard for schools to produce that, in, in large part because we shut down. And they didn't actually get the funds. Can't recall exactly when it was, but it wasn't September. I think it was more on the order of January or so. And so, you know, they really only had it six to eight weeks even to use them. So it's, I think one of the unfortunate casualties of us closing is so many things are just a little bit up in the air in terms of their effectiveness. And we don't have the data that we would want to be able to effectively evaluate.
Ms. Burke?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. And this goes back, my concern is, Ms. Page just stated as well regarding the equity piece. There were 10 schools in that line, correct? Were the 10 schools halfway to schools?
Well, the, the, we had not articulated yet how many schools. We just, the, the original proposal that the board passed would have created a fund of a million dollars. So if we were gonna give 100,000, we could do that to 10 schools. But we had not yet said what the 10 would be.
No, what my question is, the schools this year?
Oh.
Current school year that did receive the funds six or eight weeks ago, used for technology or books or whatever else. So there's money left over since this, they spent it all?
They spent it, yes.
All right, so my question is, this year, were there, how many schools benefited from this?
There were five schools that each had about $90,000.
$9,000 per school?
Yes.
So we think in terms of moving forward, because when we still look at equity, it's, it's, I can't see how we're gonna cut that out completely. I'm thinking about the technology piece, surely some computers or whatever, smart boards or whatever may need to be replaced. So is there a line item in place from, from some other area regarding replacement funds? With the professional development piece? Was there, if the teachers have still been in school with the students, there would have been an opportunity to put in, to put in practice what was, what was given or presented during, during professional development time. So what my question is, number one, I'd like to put a question mark there. I'd also like to see at some point, maybe not for this school year coming up, but the one after that, that we increase that amount of, of, we should have more than five schools because our schools are not on the playing field. $9,000 was nice now, that's awesome, that's wonderful. But there's still needs, and that was a one-time blessing. Thank you so very much. But on the other side, when they come back to school in September or August or whenever, it's still not gonna be enough.
That's right.
So what my, I don't know whether that's the point with the stimulus piece, because that is a one-time piece. But I just don't want us to pull that line out, that line item completely. It may be, have to be from something from the foundation or someplace else to be able to, to address that, and that number does need to be increased. Thank you.
All right, Ms.
Just to answer one point that Ms. Burke made. I do think on the technology front, we can definitely tap the stimulus for that. So I'm actually less concerned about the technology, both because we're buying a lot right now, and because we can definitely use the stimulus to buy a lot more. So I definitely think that is one thing that we can address.
I have no more waiting, Mr. Camaras.
Okay.
Now I do, Ms. Cosby?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. And this goes back to the stimulus package. And I know Ms. Dorr mentioned it, just to get a better understanding of how we can use it. But when we, as we talked earlier this week about equity, and we know that there are gonna be significant gaps. And so if, not only if we can look at technology, but can we look at programming? And what I mean by that, do we look at, if we can, if we can find out if we can use the stimulus funds to, let's say, move to year-round schools? I don't know, for one year, you know, it's to, to jumpstart that conversation. Because our students lost so much time. And so when they, when we do get them back in school, are we gonna have this traditional, you're off for three months during the summer? We have a lot of catching up to do. And so how do we, and, and, you know, and looking at that extended day as well. So extended day, I would like to see or to get a better, more information about can we use it for programming, extended day, year-round schooling? And if so, to start seeing a plan, if that is indeed the will of the board.
Ms. Owen, may I just?
Okay.
Briefly, yes, Ms. Cosby, I agree with you completely. In fact, yes, that is actually one of the explicit purposes for the stimulus stated in the legislation. And I do think that would be an excellent use for it. I do wanna though, just kinda help calibrate everybody in, in terms of their thinking. You know, if we added a month, let's just say, to the school year, in essence, what that does is add 10%. You know, we have a 10-month school year, let's say we added a month worth of instruction, and I'm just ballparking here. You're basically adding 10% to our labor costs, which would be about $25 million. I only share that just so folks can kinda have some benchmarks in their head. Our stimulus package is 13 million. So if we spent the entire stimulus on extended time, we could probably get two more weeks of instruction out of it. And so I just want folks to kinda keep that in their head as, as we're weighing different options and, and what to use the stimulus for. I think extended time is perfect. We just have to think about how to structure it, how much we can squeeze out of it. And, and yes, we are working on sketches for what that would look like right now. And hope to be able to have those over the next couple of weeks. But I just wanted folks to have that benchmark in their heads.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dorr.
That, that all was very helpful. I would just echo, I love what Ms. Cosby said, and I would support further analysis down that track. But I understand that those numbers are, are a lot to take in. But, but certainly, I think in times like these, you know, it, it, there's an opportunity to really think creatively about how we respond and what we do differently. And so I would, I would support anything that we can do to, on the, along the lines of what Ms. Cosby said regarding year-round, extended day, et cetera.
Okay, Mr. Camaras, you can continue.
Okay. Okay, um, all right. I think the next item then is the, uh, attendance intervention team. Um, I know obviously this is, uh, very important and will continue to be important. Um, Dr. Harris has done some more thinking about what this could potentially look like and has a proposal which is a little bit more cost-effective than what we were originally anticipating. So we originally had, um, another million, three hundred and seventy thousand. Um, here, the addition is just eight hundred thousand. Uh, we also think we might be able to supplement this work with title funds and potentially stimulus funds as well. Um, and so I know she's been hard at work in collaboration, uh, with Mr. Hughes on, on this plan, uh, but that is our, um, revised estimate based on that work. Um, next, we have the, uh, non-CIP maintenance, so that's not for building new schools or putting in new HVAC systems, but fixing windows, fixing, uh, lights and bathrooms and things of that nature. Um, we had originally put this in as an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we're now bringing it to an additional zero, so nothing, uh, in large part because we believe this is something we could use the stimulus for. These are one-time expenses and given the emphasis on cleaning and the, uh, you know, having bathrooms in a good shape, having kitchens in a good shape and whatnot, this is very much aligned to the stimulus, uh, package focus. Um, next is, uh, we had in two thousand additional Chromebooks. Um, it should not be a surprise to you that, uh, that was originally six hundred and sixty thousand. We brought that down to zero, uh, largely because we're purchasing Chromebooks, uh, left and right, right now and we can definitely use the stimulus for this. So I don't think it makes sense for us to, uh, use our local dollars for it. Um, let's see. I think that takes us to all of the yellows. Um, let me just, apologies, um, take you to the kind of final picture here. Uh, this forty-four million, that's what the board approved in terms of new expenditures for next year and, uh, this proposal that I put forward takes us to just shy of nineteen point four million. And that's the number we have to hit in terms of new expenditures for us to have a balanced budget for next year. Again, just one proposal for reaction, um, welcome all of your feedback and pushes, glad to make changes as necessary, but hopefully that gives you a little bit of a sense of some of the trade-offs, uh, that we're focusing. All right, Ellen.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. I believe Dr. Sapini has joined us. Dr. Sapini, are you there?
I'm in here.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we have you in the role today.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so at the moment, I guess we start with, hang on, um, Jonathan Young, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Terrific work, I recognize, uh, none of what you just articulated is with any pleasure, uh, but, uh, difficult circumstances merit difficult decisions. Um, I would like to reiterate, uh, what, uh, what I conveyed at the beginning or the top of the meeting along with, uh, at the risk of putting words in folks' mouths, a couple of my colleagues and, uh, in that we do all that we can to ensure as much of the raise for our teachers as possible. Uh, and specifically, I'd love to invite my colleagues to, to weigh in on, uh, what I would like to propose and, uh, I just did, did some math, uh, the last, I guess, half an hour, hour or so and, uh, and think that, at least, I, I think we can, uh, like to invite everyone's, uh, input, but I think we can provide a three percent, uh, raise, it require another approximately, uh, four point seven million dollars, if that's correct, Mr. Superintendent, and, uh, it will obviously necessitate a lot of very difficult decisions and some, uh, very unpleasant, uh, reductions in, in spending, but, uh, but I have identified those and, uh, would like, uh, would like to, if it's the will of the group, uh, initiate some discussion about, uh, that teacher, teacher raise and, uh, and how we retain as, as much of that teacher raise as possible. Uh, for what it's worth, uh, I do have a document, um, I want to be mindful of, uh, Ms. Wilson and, um, Ms. Thompson wouldn't be mindful of not doing anything, run afoul of open meeting, uh, requirements, so I'll solicit advice in regards to that, but I do have, uh, a proposal specifically for House to get to that, that three percent pay raise for teachers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I would like to reiterate the need for scenario planning. Um, you know, I, I think that at this stage, uh, there are a lot of unknowns and a lot of different possible paths that, you know, could, could happen. Um, you know, what is the likelihood and what is the scenario if we are not able to have summer school this year? What is the scenario if, um, the peak is not until later in the summer, um, and, uh, we are, you know, questioning the start of school year? What is the scenario, um, if we're not able to make significant hires over the summer? Thinking about last year's budget, um, you know, that was an increase of, you know, thirteen million dollars and, um, as we got into the year, um, we, between, you know, recent budget, uh, shifts and the budget shifts that we made, uh, during the year prior, um, you know, over two million dollars worth of, of shifts because we weren't able to spend that money. If we recall, many of the, um, new hires that were planned for last year were not brought on board until midway through the year. And so, um, if we're talking about a nineteen million dollar increase in the budget, uh, I think we have to pause and ask ourselves the, the, the reality of whether or not we'd really be able to spend all of that money at the start of the school year. And so, um, and so the, the teacher salary increase, this is something that we can actually get done. Um, and so I, I think it would, you know, behoove us to make sure that, that we are able to make those allocations. I think that the, um, salary, uh, decompression for AP, uh, APs is critical. Um, you know, I know of many APs that we've lost because our salaries were not competitive and our APs are our talent pool for principals. And so this is a really critical, a critical role for the district. Um, and so I, I think that as we look at every line item, um, we need to have a very specific plan. Let's learn from last year, let's identify, when are those new hires going to be in place? What is the likelihood that that it will happen? Um, and, uh, given everything that we have on our plate is, you know, where, where are we going to get the most need? The STEM academies, I think, are, are important programs, but I'm also reminded that, um, you know, the, the, the specialty program at Benford was not a one million dollar ask and is a very successful program. And so, um, again, given, given the circumstances that we're, we are in right now, um, let's make sure that we have the resources that are absolutely critical in place. We need to have counselors in place. We need to ensure that we have as many full-time teachers as we can. Um, I think that the substitutes is, is critical. Um, we need to make sure that we have the nursing team that we have. We need to make sure that we have, um, the janitors in place. Those are really basic, you know, non-questionable things, especially given what we're facing right now. And I really think that we start there with those things that we know we can get done and then work backwards.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, and now Ms. Dorf.
Quick question or comment and then, uh, for the chair, but before that, um, I would also, um, Mr. Cameras, and I spoke about this earlier this week, but, um, you know, to the extent, uh, along the lines of, uh, Ms. Gibson's point about scenario planning, to the extent, um, those cities' forecasts don't come in as they projected, is there a risk to us mid-year, early in the year, et cetera, and what does that look like? So, um, I know you said you were going to look into that, but I'd be interested, you know, if revenue projections aren't coming in as proposed, do we still get our allocation? Um, or is there a risk that we would, our allocation would be reduced from the city or from the state? Um, so I'd be interested in that. And then, um, in terms of, uh, just process, Ms. Owen, um, just would look to you for how, um, we can give you and Ms. Burke and the administration meaningful feedback. These are a lot of great ideas, but I, at some point, we need to probably figure out how we, you know, sort of agree with or not agree with some of these line item changes. And maybe we're not at that point because there's too many open questions, but just wanted to say that I'm in support of deferring to you on how you think this should go.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dorf. I, um, this is a lot of information and I think I'm still processing especially some of the things that people were talking about tonight. I will say this, uh, in regard to something Ms. Gibson asked about earlier, the, uh, the approvals, uh, the, I'm sorry, not the approval, but the approvals that the General Assembly did do not include any money for teacher raises in the next biennium budget. So anything we do in that regard is not including anything for raises from the state. I would also just point out that this budget that we would like to have still has to be approved by city council. And in the mayor's budget, there are no raises for anyone else. So I think it behooves us to remember that we don't want city council to feel that we are maybe going beyond what they are able to do for all the other people who work in Richmond Publics, I mean, in Richmond, in the city, for the government. So I am very concerned, as several people are, about the, the alternative program for our elementary students. I think you all know that is something very dear to my heart, having spent now three and a half years as chair of the disciplinary review committee and as Ms. Cosby has pointed out, the children who come before that committee have gotten younger and younger. When we're having second graders being recommended for expulsion, we need something. We need, we need a program. So that's very high on my list of things that we need to keep. So I'm putting it out to you all. I see that we have other questions and comments. Um, do we want to meet next week to continue budget discussions? Uh, when we do come up with some sort of a beginning, then I think we probably need to have a public hearing. Um, and I'm not sure how we do that. Um, and, and, and city council is trying to figure that out as well. Um, but these are things I think I need, I need at least three or four more days to really wade through all the changes, not just the big ones, but the little ones as well. So my, I would be comfortable coming back together an, another evening. Now, I know that's tough on the administrative team, so I want to hear them too. Um, but, and we'll try to keep it, and yeah, we've been at this for about an hour and a half, and if we can try and keep it at less than two hours, I think that helps a lot. Um, so I, I see that I have, I have Ms. Page and then Ms. Cosby and then really, if each of you would weigh in on what you see happening next week. So first, Ms. Page, then Ms. Cosby, and then I'd like to hear from everybody. Okay? Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is a lot of information to process, so I support having another session next week. Um, because these are some tough decisions that we, we have to make, but also one, one thing I-
You, you just muted yourself. There we go.
Um, one thing I would like for my colleagues to consider, as we're going through the budget, let's not cherry pick items, let's keep in mind programs or line items that's going to be the most impactful for the masses, the majority of our students, our children. So I don't want us to cherry pick items, but things that are, that are going to be most impactful and meaningful for our students.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cosby?
Uh, thank you. I, um, I am in support, uh, I am in support of not only having one additional meeting, but a couple of additional meetings because there's no way we can get through this and come to any definitive, um, agreement, uh, with even the one additional meeting. So, um, I would like to see maybe if we can get a schedule. Um, and also, I am, I, I wanted to just respond to, um, the comment with the teacher raises and how, you know, with the city, um, their raises have not been proposed and, you know, we are taxed with doing what we believe is in the best interest of the school district and, um, and supporting, um, our staff and programming that will yield the best return on investment. And so, um, I just hope that we keep that in mind and not necessarily look to what other agencies are, are doing, but what we think would be in the best interest of our school, um, district, one. Second, um, I agree with Ms. Page, not to cherry pick, but I was just wondering if even tonight, just to help the administration get going, we can identify certain things that we definitely know we want to take a second look at that has been proposed possibly for a reduction or to remove entirely. For example, um, I think we all feel very strongly about, um, the elementary, uh, we feel very strongly about a raise for our teachers and what that will look like. I don't know, but if it's one point one percent to three point seven percent or four percent, but we know we want to revisit that, we know that we want to look at, uh, what we can do for an alternative program for our elementary school-aged children. Um, we know we want to look at the, um, equity fund. We know we want to look at, um, making sure that we have enough, um, janitors to ensure that our facilities remain, um, clean and just if we can decide on that maybe tonight, and I know it won't be final, but just some things to, to have the administration look at, um, will be, I think will be a good second step.
Okay, Ms. Gibson?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree that we, we're going to definitely need those additional meetings and I'm eager to see what our options are in terms of public comment. Um, and so, um, and I also feel very strongly that we should ensure that, uh, the REA is at the table with us as we are continuing our discussions. Um, I'd also like to request that at our next meeting, there have been multiple requests for the breakdown of where we're at with our budget this year and the projection on this year's budget. I think that's going to be very critical to have. Um, as we move into the budget, there are some line items that could be funded with some of the fund balance, um, and I think it's critical that, uh, we have an understanding of where that is. Along those same lines, I'd like to see, uh, a list of all of the vacant positions that we have now, um, so that we can determine, um, how we move forward, um, on staffing those positions, uh, because, you know, we are making choices on new positions versus existing positions and I want to make sure that we have those choices to make. Um, and then likewise, I think it's, uh, important that we see, um, an outline of all of the existing contracts that we have, um, so that we can determine, you know, what we may want to renew and may- so that we can determine, you know, what we may want to renew and may not want to renew. You know, this is not going to be a zero based budget process. However, there are, you know, critical decisions that we're making. And so I would like to ensure we have as much information as possible as we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson. So it sounds as though both Ms. Gibson and Ms. Cosby have indicated at least another meeting next week. Now, Mr. Young would like to comment?
Well, you can add add me to that that popular list. I agree, we absolutely need at a minimum another meeting. So, Madam Chair, those, I think, are really terrific recommendation. But I also, I want to convey my support for what I heard from both Ms. Gibson and Ms. Cosby. Ms. Cosby, I think, really made a a point that I was hoping hoping to hear, and I think that I think we can this evening provide some some more direction and clarity to to the superintendent and staff to provide some additional direction so that that meeting or meetings plural next week are as productive as possible. So I would I welcome an opportunity to do that. That was partly my intent or impetus for what I said a moment ago in regards to the teacher raises. I do think we should at least do some of that work this evening. And then Ms. Gibson referenced zero based budgeting. Perhaps you're right. She's right, won't get there this this evening or or this this year, but I do think, at the risk of putting words in her mouth, I do think that it's important that we not just revisit new expenditures, but but that we but we really evaluate any existing expenditures and and assess the cost benefit analysis vis a vis of of reducing some current expenditures from past years vis a vis reductions in in dreams for RPS as has been proposed. So so with that, I say yes, absolutely, we need meetings for next for next week, but but I do think that we need to I would encourage us this this evening, provide a little more framework than what where we're at right now. And either say aye to some of the superintendent's recommendations or say nay and or amend amend some for consideration. And to, I think it was Ms. Burke's point earlier in the evening, we're not going to, we're not voting on anything this evening, but just to provide a little more framework or roadmap for the superintendent so we can come back next week and be as productive as possible. So that those are my two cents. Thanks for listening.
Okay, I would I would point out to you that I really would like to wrap this up soon and without a vote. And we're not voting tonight, it's kind of hard to give the superintendent a clear direction. I think if anybody else would like to weigh in and say, but we're not going to vote on a teacher raise tonight. You know, I think we've got people who say we want to do this and we want to do that, and I think all of this is helpful to the superintendent, but we're not voting. Okay, you understand? Okay, so now Ms. Gibson?
Um, I have one other question. You know, there have been lots of folks asking about the transfer fair. And I'd like to hear from the administration what the process will be in terms of contract renewal, switching positions, you know, that that process as it ties into, you know, looking to see where we're going to have slots that we need to fill.
Because this this meeting is only about budget discussion. So we can't get into the transfer fair. Am I correct on that, Nicole?
Sorry, I had unmuted. Yes, so you've only you only you voted on the agenda and the agenda was about the was simply about the budget. So really, anything else would be going off topic. So, yes.
The reason why bringing up the transfer fair, though, if there are teachers that are wanting to transfer and we and, you know, they're looking for other jobs, I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of of where we need those resources, how how that is going to tie into the overall calendar?
I'm sorry, Dr. Sapini and then Mr. Camaras.
Yes, certainly, other meetings are great, as we should have had meetings, but my question is, what is our deadline?
Okay, Mr. Camaras?
I would need to look into a couple of things to get you a deadline, so I will do that. I can also provide an update about transfers via email. It's also something that we've prepped for my RPS Direct. Coming up early next week, we've been working with the Talon Office on a whole strategy to, in essence, do virtual interviews for the transfer fair. So that's just about ready to go live in terms of sharing it with the workforce. And so glad to share that via email with the board if we can't talk about it today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so in our original sort of calendar, we said next week we would discuss the budget again on the fourth, and we would try to approve our budget by the nineteenth? Help me with this, Mr. Camaras.
I think the eighteen.
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth. On the eighteenth, thank you. Um, yes, I don't have a good mental calendar. So between now and then, and and we have to get it to the city council because they have a they have a deadline, you know, that they need to meet, they need to have time to go through our budget and and the rest of the mayor's proposed budget and their amendments, and they're going through all of that right now. So I don't think we can wait longer than the eighteenth, but I'm open to other possibilities. So, Mr. Camaras, can you find out, check with the city people?
Yes.
Okay, and then we can, if we need to do more. So let's start by just setting up one meeting for next week, and then we'll see where we are then. And we'll work on how we're going to do something about a public hearing. We'll need to do some serious looking around for that. And so is there any night that everybody is not going dancing next week? Is there a bad night for anybody? I mean, it's Thursday, we want to do Monday, Tuesday, seems to me, maybe one of those two days would be good. Give us some time, but still give us back together and have these discussions. So I'm, Madam Clerk?
I would.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Mr. Camaras, you wanted to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Can you ask each member which is, let's just pick Tuesday. Is Tuesday okay?
Okay, same time, six o'clock?
Yeah.
Ms. Dorr, are you available Tuesday at six?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson? Mr. Young?
Yes.
My computer froze, apologies.
Um, I was asking if you were available Tuesday at six?
Yes, I heard. I'm I'm available.
Thank you. Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
I'm not available.
Okay.
Ms. Burke?
I signed up for Virginia School Board Association webinar. It starts at five thirty. I think it's five thirty to six thirty on Tuesday night.
All right, then let's go back and do you think people will be ready to discuss on Monday?
Monday is not good for me. I have two webinars already scheduled.
Goodness, lady.
I know.
Well, suppose we tried for six thirty on Tuesday. Could you do that?
Yes.
All right. We'll go back with Ms. Wilson.
I'm not available on Tuesday.
Well, it may be that we'll have to have a discussion without you because we, I think we need to be either Monday or Tuesday. All right, so let's go back and see if we can do it at six thirty on Tuesday.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Okay, so the only one not available is Ms. Page on Tuesday.
Okay, so Ms. Page, if you can't rearrange your busy schedule to be with us, please give us all of your information, your thoughts, your priorities about any item in the whole budget before Tuesday, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will try to rearrange my schedule to spend, this is an important matter, but spending my birthday with you guys.
Ah, I'll tell you, look at these April people, Mr. Barlow, Ms. Page, Mr. Hughes had a birthday this week.
Mine's on Thursday.
Liz?
We're all, we're all Tauruses and stuff.
Yes, we rock.
All right, well, then I am going to adjourn this special meeting of the Richmond Public Schools Budget Work Session, and we will reconvene at six thirty on Tuesday night. Thank you all.
Thank you, Linda. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.